You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is September 20th, 2023 meeting of the LaPorte County Board of Commissioners. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot accesslaporte county dot org.
We'd like to call to order the LaPorte County Commissioners Meeting Wednesday, September 20th at six o'clock. Pledge allegiance led by Rich Merzinski.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner Grammerosa.
Present.
Commissioner Merzinski.
Present.
Commissioner Haney.
Present.
You have a quorum.
So just kind of looking at the back of the room, we'd like to thank South Central students for coming out and viewing our meeting. Thank you, guys. You're doing a great job. Part of your government class? Good. Okay, so moving on. Consider agenda.
To approve as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consider approval of September 6, 2023 minutes.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Consideration of claims.
Move to approve payroll as presented.
I'll second payroll.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Commissioners, the payroll was in the amount of $1,459,557.95. And letter B is operating expense claims in the amount of $3,683,194.43. Apologies for jumping the gun there, auditor.
Do we have a motion for the operating expenses claims?
I have correspondence here regarding our expenses. This was to the auditor. To him, I'm asking that our litigation bills for June 15th to July 15th submitted to the county on July 17th, 2023 in the amount of $16,817.50 be placed on tonight's claims docket. As recently as August 7th, 2023, you wrote to me and said, congratulations again on the detail in your litigation billings extensively documented. Our disputes have always come from the miscellaneous non-litigation billings, which I'm not sure you've had a chance to review yet for that period. As you have relayed, congratulations on the extent of detail in the litigation billings. I am hopeful you will agree those have been placed on tonight's claims docket. Are they, sir? Sorry, are they?
Sir, I have no comment on that other than it's the dispute with the vendor is a matter of pending litigation. It's going before the Indiana Court of Appeals, and I have no further comment at this time. Unless you want to have a lengthy discussion about it, that's all I have to say.
Excuse me, excuse me, Commissioner Merzinski, are we talking about a current bill or bills and litigation? I'm sorry.
This says bills and litigation that were extensively documented.
Okay, so I just want to be clear, these aren't bills connected with any litigation. Are we clear on that?
It says your litigation billing.
No, not litigation that's part of, I'm sorry, semantic.
No, that's, that's separate. That doesn't have anything to do with.
This is a recent one from what year? From what?
No, this is what, from June and July of this year?
June 15th to July 15th, 2023.
So it's a recent bill.
A recent bill.
Submitted to the county on July 17th, 2023, $16,817.50.
I think the more interesting question is why two of three commissioners do not support the statutory authority of my office and to dispute with that vendor. That's, that's the more interesting question. Other than that, this matter, there's a broader issue of litigation between myself and the vendor.
We're not talking about.
So the vendor is engaging in coercion and abuse of power with two of the three of you, I believe, and that will come out in court. And you basically walked away from your statutory obligations towards my office. So I think we need to discuss that as well if you want to discuss the attorney's bill.
There's a bill on the table, and it is from June to July. I had nothing to do with this. Mr. Merzinski asked, have you paid the bill?
I told you, I told you I have no comment on these matters as I'm in litigation.
You have no.
I'm in litigation with the vendor right now.
This is a recent bill that's come through.
So if you want to keep talking about this, we can.
Okay, so then that would be, you have no comment.
I have no comment. That's right. It's in litigation.
Okay, so we need a motion.
With the vendor.
And a second for operating expense claims, $3,683,194.43. Do I have a motion to have that paid?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Madam President, I'm gonna have to abstain from this. I'm on vacation this week. I did just come into town this evening specifically for this meeting. Be resuming my vacation as soon as this is over. First week's vacation I've taken this year. So unfortunately for the digital information provided for me here this evening before coming in.
Okay, then I'll second, I'll second that. I'll second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Staying.
Moving on to seven, public comment. Do we have public comment? Anyone from the public that would like to speak?
Yes, I would. Good evening. My name is Attorney Stan Ruble, and I have represented Commissioner Connie Grammerosa over the last several months. As many of you know, there has been a special prosecutor appointed to investigate allegations of criminal activity against Commissioner Grammerosa. Commissioner Grammerosa has completely and fully cooperated in the entirety of this investigation over several months. She has subjected herself to questioning from two separate Indiana State Police detectives. I am happy to report that the special prosecutor has determined that Commissioner Grammerosa has broken no laws and that no criminal charges will be filed against her. I do think that it is an interesting piece of information that these charges were only brought to light after Commissioner Grammerosa and another commissioner voted to replace the president of the commission. Take that information as you will. I do find it to be a bit unfortunate that the use of taxpayer dollars was used to investigate completely speechless allegations against Commissioner Grammerosa. We all know that there is real crime in LaPorte County and every county in the state of Indiana that needs to be investigated. And then taking away from the resources for that is an unfortunate circumstance here. I know that the reputation of LaPorte County as a former elected official living in San Joseph County, I know that the reputation of LaPorte County has up until very recently been one of the highest in the state in terms of bipartisan cooperation, in terms of good government for the citizens of LaPorte County. I'm not sure what's happened in our political climate anywhere in this country, LaPorte County not excluded. But it is certainly, I think, not the finest hour for LaPorte County government to have investigation after investigation. If you want to use the term witch hunt, you can use that term. It's not a term that I use, but I am hoping that through the remainder of the terms of the commissioners, that LaPorte County can do the work of the people. That is very important work that the three of you do as commissioners. Again, as a former elected official, I know how hard that job can be. I know how many demands there are. I am very pleased that Connie was exonerated in this matter. Over the last several months, I've gotten to know her. I know her to be a true public servant. I know her to be an individual who is not a county commissioner to improve her pocketbook, not a county commissioner for the glory, not a county commissioner for the power. She's doing it for the right reasons. She has the best interests of LaPorte County citizens at heart. Connie and her husband, Rich, have a great reputation in the community as honest, ethical business people. I think that it's unfortunate that she and her families had to go through this. I would like to thank the special prosecutor Nelson Chipman from Marshall County for engaging in this investigation. I find it to be quite remarkable that in his 10-page report to Judge Alavisos, he details the reasons Connie Grammerosa is not charged with a crime and has done no criminal activity. But his last paragraph, I think, bears repeating. These are special prosecutor Nelson Chipman's words. "One final observation, even a cursory review of LaPorte County media outlets reveals a continuing and often bitter conflict among elected and appointed officials, past and present, that may seriously undermine public confidence in the effectiveness of local government. The people's business is far more important for that to continue. LaPorte County government is no exception. This squabble is better resolved at the ballot box rather than a jury box." Again, I can't say that any better than myself. I hope that everything in LaPorte County continues to improve and that everyone can get along. I am very pleased that Connie Grammerosa has been exonerated. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Anyone on Zoom for public comment? Hearing no others, we close public comment, and we'd like to move to department head comments.
Good evening, Jeremy Sabecki from the LaPorte County Parks Department. Mainly, two things. I wanted to thank the charity and Andrew from the Hyroy Department. Recently, we put in a, had a subject put in for a new restroom at Creek Ridge, and they hauled a bunch of dirt out to us. So working together with our guys to smooth it out and make a usable space there and mowable and maintainable space. So without them, that would have cost the county a lot more. And so I wanted to thank them at this meeting. And I also just wanted to mention Pioneer Days is this weekend at Creek Ridge County Park. 10 o'clock to 5 o'clock both days at Creek Ridge. You know, if you've been out there, you know what it's all about, but we try to add new things every year. We still have the favorites like the ham and bean over the fire and popcorn, you know, kettle corn and the quilters from the Pioneer Land and the Fairgrounds and several other people from there. So come out, and it's a very affordable family day. It's $2 for adults and $1 for children and seniors. So we feel like that's something that everybody can come out and do. So come see us 10 to 5 at Creek Ridge County Park Saturday and Sunday. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other department heads?
Kristin Zoppel, voter registration. I just wanted to let you guys know what we have going on right now. We're in the middle of the election, and we're calling for all of our poll workers organizing early voting and travel board, the mobile unit, and we're excited to work with the election board with the new vote centers. And yesterday was National Voter Registration Day, so we've got a lot of incoming registrations. And we've been having weekly meetings with the election people just to make sure that we're all on the same page. Everything's getting done that needs to be done, and we're all on the same page. And right now, we're doing a lot of registrations because if you're going to register for the municipal election, you have to be registered by October 10th. So that's what we're doing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam President, I have a couple of reports here this evening. Over the past few months, I've been speaking with and working with our emergency services folks, attempting to get a handle on the issues surrounding the fires related to hand sanitizer storage and processing here in LaPorte County. These fires have caused massive property damage and pushed our emergency response resources to their limits. They've caused tens of thousands of dollars in property damage. Or I should say, tens of thousands of dollars in damage to fire department equipment, as well as jeopardized the lives of our first responders and have resulted in injuries. The sheer volume of water required to fight these fires is staggering and strains both municipal and county water resources. In one instance, the city of LaPorte estimated they used over 5 million gallons of water to fight one of these fires. There are also environmental concerns. Given the sheer volume of water that is being used, the runoff from these fires has the potential to contaminate streams, lakes, and drinking water. As a member of the LaPorte County Plan Commission, I have called upon, already began the process and called upon our joint zoning to changes for our joint zoning ordinance to put additional guardrails around any facilities storing, processing, manufacturing, or handling these highly flammable materials. I'm currently working on this, and I would encourage anyone, any members of the public who are interested in this to attend the next Plan Commission meeting JZO workshop. For the reasons I have already mentioned and others, I'm extremely concerned for the safety of our citizens, first responders, and environment. And at this point, I'm not sure simply updating our JZO may be enough. The primary purpose of any legitimate government body is to protect the people, their rights, and their property. We have to take that responsibility seriously. The safety of LaPorte County, its residents, and our first responders is a paramount concern to me. Tonight, I'm formally asking for an investigation in the Glycerin Traders LLC, their associated LLCs and DBAs. I'm also calling on all the appropriate agencies, including county resources, to seek any property, any possible remedies we may be entitled to. I'd also like to ask our county attorney to help in those efforts to make sure that any damage that may have been done to our environment, the equipment done damages to the fire department, and any other possible remedies we might be entitled to.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, did you mention a company, Glycerin?
Traders LLC, yeah.
Thank you.
I can provide you with more information after the meeting if you'd like.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Certainly. On happier news, our insurance plan, our county self-funded insurance plan is currently running $1.2 million ahead year-to-date, which is fantastic news, as we continue to build our surpluses up, just in case there's any unforeseen incidents that do come up in the future. And one last kind of housekeeping item note. The report that was made to law enforcement was done a month prior to being removed. The month prior to being removed, it was removed as president in May, and the.
We're not gonna be commenting on that because.
Just clarifying the date there.
Yeah, but that's not true, so we're not gonna comment on that.
I encourage everyone to read the special prosecutor.
Do we have any other department heads?
Says an attorney provided substantially inaccurate information to prosecutor as well.
Any other department heads?
Heather Stevens, LaPorte County Clerk, Secretary to the Election Board. I'm here to find out about the early voting locations. We have the go-ahead from Nate Lauks over at the State Street Church. People went there in the spring. It'd be great to have that same contract for this fall. And the same for the corner of Eighth and Wabash, but I'm not hearing back from you guys. So we're to the point where I have to issue notice, and if I don't, we can't have it in Michigan City, and I don't want to, I don't want to be there.
Again, you're not gonna be on the corner because obviously you know that the corner is there, and you'll have the same office next one over.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, so we're good to go for that. Okay, so that's why, that's why I've been emailing. And then the next, the next question that I have is what is going on upstairs? And I don't.
Again, moves, moves within the, that's not something that we talk about. That's like an inner.
I understand.
Moving offices.
And I understand.
About that in public.
Right now, I have an employee basically working out of a storage room because everything's been shoved into that room. I have, the rumor mill is going crazy. It's destroying morale in the courthouse. And anytime anybody asks you guys something, they are either just, my understanding is spoken to very rudely or ignored. So for the sake of the county, I mean, it's disruptive. This is just becoming disruptive. So I know that you can't talk about it here, but I think that to talk to those department heads and those elected officials would maybe, maybe set things back on the right track.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Clerk Stevens, just for housekeeping purposes, you need that in a formal motion formally.
I do.
This evening for the polling place.
I do, and I did send to all of you, along with the county attorney, the lease agreement that we had last year because it does need to be one of the.
And we will have it taken care of by the next meeting. So we had, we had actually sent you back an email and told you to go ahead and work with our assistant.
Yes, and I did speak with Diane.
Done back and forth. So you secured the church. We secured Eighth and Wabash. We will wait for us to get the contract. You'll send it to Diane. Diane will forward it to our attorney. Our attorney will review it.
But in the meantime, I can move forward.
Absolutely.
With public notice and all of that.
And then we'll go ahead and we will approve it at the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. You love it. Yeah, thank you.
Madam President, as to Clerk Stevens' second, second comment as far as offices, I too have heard.
That is an internal, that's an internal issue, and we will not be discussing that at a commissioners meeting.
How do we discuss it then?
So do we have any other department heads?
Employees from multiple departments asking me where departments are moving. I've heard rumors from things moving out of the courthouse over to this side, from this, from, to the Hyler Building, from the Hyler Building moving to the courthouse.
Can we call for a reassess?
No, I'm just legitimately asking a question. I've got dozens of employees reaching out.
This is an internal, these are things that we take care of internally. We do not discuss moves within the buildings at, this has to be approved at a commissioners.
I'm not saying it has to be approved, but it would be great to let people know. As one of the three commissioners who would in charge of building, it would be great to know what's being moved because there's been zero information shared with me or apparently any.
Ma'am Commissioner, I'm sorry, ma'am chair, Commissioner. Obviously, this is associated with the flood damage and the disruption it's caused.
I don't necessarily think so.
No, it's not.
We're not regulations moving, surveyors' office moving, Lads moving, which Lads need to move. They need an actual secure offices.
I'm aware of the Lads issue. If there's any department heads that have issues, they can always reach out to me or ma'am president, and we can respond. But I don't know the specifics, and I'm sorry, I don't know the specifics of that. But if someone reaches out with a specific concern, then we can address it.
I would just ask to give our employees some form of reassurance. Is it just Lads that's gonna be moving, or are there other departments? Top secret. I don't, I don't know what would be secret about that. I mean.
So do we, moving on, do we have any other department heads? Do we have anyone on Zoom that would like to speak under department heads? We're now closing department head comments. Moving on to requests. Under A, we have consider permission to approach the council for additional appropriations. Lynn Swanson.
Motion to approve for her to go to the council.
Second.
Oh, sorry, my mic wasn't on. Motion for her approved to go to the council.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Under old business, consider changing Commissioner's administrative assistant position to office manager and change from appointed to hire at comment six level.
I would make a motion to send this before the council and Employee Review Committee to consider the changes. I believe they're the appropriate bodies to actually make that as they set salaries and compensation and send it to them with a favorable recommendation for the change.
Actually, this should be in two parts. This.
So he made a motion, so are you seconding?
Second, because I want to explain what happened here, a bit of history. This, the reevaluation committee actually passed this in June of '22 to, for the pay level to go to a comment six. The council promised to address it at budget hearings. They did not. And come the end of the year, they never did readdress it. As far as the, so I would say that part of the motion, that I would make a motion that we pass that along to the council for funding.
Okay, so you have a motion. So we have just a motion to pass the pay raise onto the council?
Right.
So that's the motion. Do we have a second?
Been approved by the reevaluation committee in June of '22.
Excuse me, ma'am Commissioner, just so we have a clear minute record here. I'm sorry for interrupting. If Mr., I'm sorry, if Commissioner Haney's motion was not seconded, then.
It dies for lack of a second.
So let's just make a record of that. Now, Commissioner Merzinski, if you could make your motion again, so we're clear on that and see if that's seconded.
Take this in two parts. The part having to do with moving to a comment six pay level. It's already been approved by the reevaluation committee in June of '22. I would make a motion that we pass that along to the council with our recommendation that the pay grade be removed from a comment five to a comment six.
Is there a second?
Do we have a second for that?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. And the other part of that, which is the authority of the commissioners to change Commissioner's administrative assistant position to that of office manager. I make a motion that we make that change effective now.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
And then there's a third issue of the appointment to a hire.
Well, I probably should have stated that in the motion, changing, changing the, from administrative assistant position of appointed to office manager as a hired position. I would amend my motion.
I'll second that amendment.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, under new business, consider.
Madam Chair, we're gonna have to vote on the amended.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, moving on to new business, consider policy update for employee handbook on paid parental leave.
True, we've all had a chance to read it. Mr. Attorney, you've had a chance to review it?
Yes, Commissioner Merzinski, I have, and I don't have any concerns with that policy.
I make a motion to approve them.
I had a chance.
Do we have a second?
Sure, this was sent over to me this morning. I did have a chance to review it, like to.
Actually, it was sent out to all three of us on Friday.
I don't believe I was CC'd in that. I could be mistaken, but I know I did receive it this morning. Perhaps I was mistaken. Maybe it did come out. As I said, I've been on vacation this week, but I've tried to keep up on what we had here this evening. I would like to thank Councilman Keel and Clerk Stevens for getting the ball rolling on this several, several months back. It's greatly appreciated, and I think it's probably something that's long overdue. I'll second.
That's funny because I never seen them at any of our committee meetings. It was pretty much just me and Mr. Novak and Monique Thomas. We actually had meetings. But if you guys had separate meetings, then, then that's good.
Great. You guys took it aside and decided not to tell anybody and run by the side, but at least this is a solid start, at least, in a direction we need to be headed in.
We have a motion.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
B, consider settlement improvement for accident claim in the amount of $11,082.24.
To approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
C, consider additional road miles maintained by the county for inclusion on the state road inventory map.
Motion to approve, and I want to thank Mr. Bishop for his work on this. I know that was a lot of work. I know it wasn't easy, and this was a good find. This is a lot more money in the pocket of the taxpayers, and thank you for your work.
Right, thank you.
Roughly what the amount's gonna be?
So we identified 60 miles of more roadway in the county. This is roadway we maintain currently. And we're gonna add 60 miles to the state inventory map, and that allows us to procure more MVH funds and local road and street funds. Right now, we roughly get $6,000 a mile for MVH funds and $1,000 a mile for local state and road funds. If you had those 60 to get with 60 miles, we're looking roughly at $420,000-ish per year.
Thank you. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
There was an acknowledgement form, I believe, that was sent. This requires the president's signature, so.
Okay.
I'll pick that up later. Thanks.
Moving on, consider Peterson Consulting Service, Inc. for G A S B G A A P Compliance, Tim Stables.
Commissioners, this is regarding the requirements for accounting and providing financial statements have been getting more and more onerous based upon the population size. The State Board of Accounts has tightened up the restrictions, what, how we report things. And we were written up under a prior, a prior auditor for not having an adequate capital assets maintenance, management, and oversight plan in terms of keeping track of items. It was one of their top items of concern. We hired Peterson Consulting already last year. They set us up and all the department heads as an overseer so that we're keeping track of essentially our own assets at the departmental level.
uh, as an overseer, so that we're keeping track of essentially our own assets, uh, at the departmental level. Um, the, uh, financial, uh, amount of the continuing contract is much less than the initial. To get us going, it's four thousand dollars. Uh, and, uh, we would ask respectfully, we provided this to you about eight, eight days ago, uh, that you support the continuing arrangement. Uh, we need the expertise of the consultant to, uh, make sure that we stand the straight and narrow on, uh, keeping track of our capital assets. Uh, we would ask for your support of this contract respectfully.
And there's no way we can do it internally?
We might be able to in time. I just was discussing that in my office with, uh, my chief deputy. It's a good question. Um, it's something that, that we're looking into. It's, it's a possibility for, uh, for next year. Um, so it's, it's, it's a legitimate question.
Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve the Peterson Consulting Services.
Mr. Attorney, have you looked this over? You approve it?
I have, uh, Commissioner Morozinski, and considering with the issues from the predecessor administration and with wanting to be in compliance, this is, and if I might ask a question to Auditor Stavis, this is a, a one, this contract is for now, it's not automatically renewing or anything like that.
No, it's four thousand dollars for, for, uh, the capital assets, to complete the capital assets and assist with the department heads in keeping track of, uh, of updating the capital assets so that we can do a, uh, our twenty-twenty-three year end.
Correct. So I'm okay with the contract, and if, and if, uh, the auditor's office can review or somehow, uh, educate themselves further while this entity is performing the service, hopefully they can do this on their own next year and subsequent years. But considering where we are now, I think it would be prudent to move forward. Thank you.
So we have a motion on the floor to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting closed.